Good evening, everyone. I now call to order our work session. City Council Committee of the whole is now six o'clock on May the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I welcome you all here and thank you for your time in sharing with us. It means so much to have you here and be part of this process. At this time, let us stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Oh eternal God, we come to you now as we've come time and time again in the name of Jesus. For we realize that there is no other name on earth or in heaven that can do us any good. Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask that you bind us together with those cords of love, that nothing and no one can separate, and that we can be forever mindful of who we are and whose we are. May we broadcast love, because when nothing else can help, love can lift us. Now, Father, help us in our deliberations that we will do what is pleasing to your sight, that we will say what is pleasing to your ears, that we will fall away from self and totally lean to thee. Thank you for this privilege, this honor to lead thy people. May we do that in the admonition of the Lord. We ask this in all blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Let us pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As far as my comments today, I just want to reiterate my thanks for all of you being here. I thank our administrator and our staff, our council, that we're doing this process as far as the budget is concerned. Um, I thank you for your patience as working with us. I thank you for being patient when you had some problems, and hopefully we can work that out. We still want to be a council and a city that takes care of our citizens. We're trying our best, and we're going to be better and better as time progresses. As now, we're going to have a report from our administrator.
Well, Mr. Mayor, to the point that you just made, I had an opportunity to do some rubber beneath the road work and get out of the office this past week after we, uh, we knew we had some issues down on Secona Road. Um, and we heard about some of them at our last, uh, meeting, so last Tuesday. I brought a bunch of donuts and nobody ate one, not a single donut. We had to eat them back here, but we met with, uh...
It was pouring rain.
It was pouring rain. It was a pretty nasty morning. Um, but we did meet with a number of the residents there and, um, you know, problems, big and small. Uh, we listened, and there were some things that we were able to take care of immediately. Um, and I'm very pleased. We've had some folks here tonight who are grateful, uh, for what we were able to do. And we're, we're keeping a, a watchful eye over there as the project is, is getting near the conclusion of the, um, installation of the water main. And then they will come back and do the service lines, but, uh, uh, I think we've been able to help some people out with some of the issues they had. So very pleased to, to have been able to do that.
That's awesome.
Um, along those lines, uh, we've been working as, uh, we've had a lot of rain. Uh, it is springtime outside, even though every once in a while we have these odd cold snaps. Um, but lots of grass is growing, uh, and rubbish doesn't have to have rain to, to be there. But, uh, we've been working to stress that, uh, in some of the key areas of town. Um, as I ride around and others report them to me, uh, uh, anybody from a neighborhood who sees something that I haven't run across, please, uh, give me a call or email me. Um, we have been sending out what I think are very cordial letters, um, to property owners, um, asking, reminding them of our codes, that, uh, we need to keep our yards mowed and in orderly, uh, fashion, um, and that we don't need to accumulate rubbish for everybody else to see. Um, next step is we will be looking into, um, some more serious, uh, harder nuts to crack with, uh, property code violations where we've got some, uh, structures that are in really poor condition, um, around town. So we will be sending out, and again, the best way to do this, I think, is to, to write a cordial letter that reminds people, uh, that we all take pride in Pickens and, and what we aspire to do, but also mentioning that there are, um, some penalties involved, um, if these things don't get taken care of. So please, uh, please bring to my attention, uh, council and any members of the public, uh, anything that you feel needs to be addressed. Um, I've been very pleased so far, um, that we've had a lot of success with reminding people about these things and having them take care of them. It shows what a good, uh, community Pickens is. Um, so, and then finally, you have, uh, before you council, um, we have talked about in the budget work sessions. Um, and we'll talk about it again today. There was a proposed amendment. Um, and I think the, basically, the consensus of council was we were heading in the direction of essentially freezing other than our, uh, four percent cost of living increase. Any changes in salary for individual, um, employees? We've run the numbers. If we back those out, that's about a fifty-nine thousand dollar difference, um, in the budget. I think we were standing at fifty thousand in fund balance. So that would put us at about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in fund balance, um, just as we make that adjustment. And this proposal, uh, from Evergreen Solutions would be to move forward with the study, um, that we've called for about our compensation and classification of our employees, uh, which are very important, uh, the most important aspect of our team here at the city. Uh, we do want to keep people, um, engaged and retain and recruit, uh, continue to recruit good workers. Um, this group has just done, uh, the county's study, and they have worked in the area. Um, and they just turned over, uh, what they did in the county. So they've got some background in the area and with government, uh, employment. And the pricing on it is about half of what I feared it would be. Um, this proposal is to do all of this major scope of work that we provided for you for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Certainly with the, um, deferred action on any salary increases, saving fifty-nine thousand dollars, that kind of pays for itself, looking ahead at what we need to do, uh, with our employees. And then we can get some data and, um, react to it. So I got this. It was a good proposal. Just wanted to get it in front of you. Um, there is, uh, you know, council, uh, in their discretion. You can move ahead with it now and go ahead and get the ball rolling, or we could wait till July first. And that is entirely up to you, but I just wanted to put it in front of you.
I recommend July one. I still feel the same way I did about spending money we don't have. Put it in our new budget and let's go with it.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Anybody else have an opinion on that?
So, and this can be conducted, they're saying approximately three months from the executed contract.
Right.
So if we pushed it to July one, presuming we could get it going, execute a contract very close to July one, we'd be looking at probably the end of October.
Yeah, it would be this...
Realistically.
Before the holidays.
I see what, um, Councilman Neely is saying. I just would hate to hold off for some of these employees. I'd like to get it going sooner rather than later, but I do understand.
Well, I've come to understand as we look at this as far as the method of invoicing will be thirty-three percent, uh, twice and then thirty-four percent, um, when they start to take care of the task. So we won't be paying all that money out at one time. It'll be a third of it.
That's a good point.
So I just wanted to put that out there for you to also take into consideration. Because the sooner the better, um, it could probably get here a whole lot sooner if we start implementing, um, this process. That's my feeling on it. Um, I'm also in agreement with Mr. Neely, Councilman Neely, um, that we don't know exactly what we're doing that, that with the money exactly, but if we say that we're saving that fifty-some of our thousand dollars for not giving, um, raises.
We're gonna be saving if we spend part of it.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Do we have the money?
Yeah.
Do we have thirty-three percent? Can we pay this now?
I believe that we will have carryforward funds pretty into the budget year now. The timing wise, I think employees are anxious to get this sooner rather than later. But from an administrative standpoint, three months in the speed of government, I'm fine with waiting until the new year. Um, I just, I am, um, you know, cognizant of, you know, the employees are going to watch this and what do they think? But, um, we can put it in the budget, and then we know we're covered either way.
Well, did they say that they were, they were going to get on it? How quick were they actually to begin to begin the study? Because we're looking at this, what, it might be not be that much difference anyway. They might not start till, yeah, close to July first.
And, and I think that, uh, you know, that could be something, information that I could, uh, bring back to you because there would be an implementation timeframe. And I think that if the, um, you know, even if council didn't vote, if there, and there just seems to be kind of a consensus that this is what we're going to do. I think if I spoke to them and said, how soon can you get it done? We're going to approve it instead of waiting until July second to say we're going to approve it, then you're adding time to it. I can go back and ask them those questions. I think that would be appropriate.
And there could be, we could wait till July second, and it could be a delay from then as well. So in my opinion, we should get this ball rolling as quickly as we can.
Yeah.
So can we, can we say we'll approve it starting July first, then get the ball rolling, and then make sure it starts then, or second, or whatever?
Um, you, you could. I mean, we're, we're almost, I mean, we're at June.
Yeah, because I mean, we're talking about a month here.
Yeah, so if we approved it, we wouldn't expend the funds until July. That's a very good point.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, I, I think that most, uh, of these professional services folks, if I called them and said...
Could you not tell them that you want it done, but you want to pay for it out of July budget?
Absolutely.
I just don't like spending borrowed money.
Yeah, I think that might be a good...
Obligated to go for something else.
I, I think we should get it going as quickly as possible, but, um, my question to council is, when we get this study back, are we going to approve this? Because these guys are going to come back with...
Would you give them a bank check?
With numbers. Now, I mean, my question is really, I'm not kidding. We're just going sixteen grand on this, but I want to know, because I'm going to do it. I, I would say, yes, let's do this. But if they come back and say, well, everybody needs, oh, I'm just going to hypothetical, ten bucks an hour, everybody right now. Hmm, okay. I mean, I, I could, I could see five bucks easily.
Well, with this study, it's a recommendation. I think we can go and use that recommendation for our discretion.
But this sixteen thousand, you want to make sure we're going to do this. I mean, we're going to follow, at least, we're going to...
We can't really say.
We still have to stay within our budget, no matter if they come back with two dollars, two hundred dollars more. We still got to stay within our budget. So if that, I mean, if that's... That's the way I look at it. That's the way I'm interpreting. If they come back and say, this department right here is three dollars less per person than what they should be.
Right.
Yeah, uh, these over here is good, these over here is good. Well, that makes sense, but you can't just go in there if they come back and say, everybody gets five dollars more. They ain't, we, we can do that and stay within the budget. I don't feel that.
Well, it's just their recommendation.
And I'm not going to say I'm going along with anything until I look at it.
Just to, just to allay any fears that people have from, from that coming up, that, um, I think we've got some work to do to figure out some areas. I don't think we're going to be that far out of whack to begin with. Um, the typical, uh, expense that comes from this, you have time to plan for because it's the classification part. It's not the compensation. I think we're close, and that shouldn't cost us too much money.
The maintenance is where they're...
Right. It's where you come in and you go, you've worked here for five years, and now you go to another step, which I, I believe that good employees deserve that kind of knowledge. That's where the expense will be, and that will be down the road, so we'll have time to look at it. And in almost every case that I've seen this done, and I think the county is going to approach it in a similar way, um, they go in and they work on it over a number of years. So I, I don't think it will be an immediate, um, huge hit to the budget.
And then they finally get away from it.
Yes, and then you have to do one, then you have to do one a decade later because you stopped doing it.
Yeah. But...
So my question is, so if, so what's the benefit of rushing it where then we're, we're, wait till July first? What's, what's the big benefit?
I, I don't...
Well, we have people waiting.
Yeah, I think we'll be doing it in July anyway. So the, the only thing is, is if we approve it now, they can put us on their calendar, which that could be July fifteenth before they could get it.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we don't, I mean, the, I guess the only, I wouldn't characterize it as a rush, but the only, uh, is if we, a lot of these people will not set their calendar until you say, council has said we're going to do it. So if we wait until June thirtieth to do it, then it could be August.
I'm all about doing it.
Yeah.
I'm going to think it suits to be done.
Can we put it on the next, um, meeting for vote?
Suits me.
Okay, all right. Let's go to the next one. Go to the head.
All right. Um, so now we have the continuation of the discussion of the budget ordinance. And, and essentially, I think that we've all held hands and felt pretty comfortable about ninety-nine percent of it. We've had a couple of things. Um, we have run the numbers. Uh, we haven't generated a changed document because we wanted to give you some basic information, uh, to see if this suits before we drop it in there. I mentioned the fifty-nine thousand dollar reduction, uh, with the salaries being, uh, for-sold. And then the, looking at the change to the, uh, method of charging for water for customers outside the city and eliminating the three and a half percent increase on water only inside the city. Um, doing that over a two-year period, roughly, it's, we gave you a figure before of going all the way. It was five hundred seventy-eight thousand. If we go half the way, it's two hundred and seventy-nine. So if that is, um, and I think we've had the discussions of the merits, I think everybody's, feels comfortable with that. Um, we can produce a document that basically changes those two factors. Um, and I think we might be where council wants to be. Um, that's up to you guys to tell me.
Are, is, um, are you through with your report? Are we into the discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think we've moved on to that.
We're in discussion for the budget. What does everybody think? About those two elements put being put?
Tell me the salaries were, were going to not raise. Whose salaries are we talking about? What?
What the, the, the amendment we were just discussing was we have a four percent cost of living increase for all employees who get a satisfactory rating. So employees will get a raise. Um, but we had certain adjustments within several departments, but more in one, uh, in the police department for starting level officers that we're going to hold off on until we get the results of the study. Those differences totaled to an amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars over the course of the fiscal year. So it would be a fifty-nine thousand dollar reduction in all the numbers that we've looked, looked at before.
That's the reason why we just discussed this last one.
Yes.
Yes.
So if, if I'm understanding you right, city residents will not get a price increase on their water this year?
Correct.
If we, if that's the dollar.
If we pay us, that's right.
That's the proposal. I mean, council, yes.
Anybody else have any discussion about the budget? Or any other item of the budget?
So fifty-nine thousand dollar difference taking out the pay increases.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, we're saying we're going to do this pay study. So once the pay study comes back, we're probably going to revisit that, if those are low.
Well, I think that, um, that would be up to council. We can either address it mid-year, um, and see if...
It should be in the pay study if it's warranted, so.
Or, you know, it could go into next year's budget, budget process either way. But that's up to you guys.
This is just not just a pay study, though, isn't it? It's other things also, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Classification.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot in that study that would be super helpful.
I mean, just my thoughts, I think the police department is the tip of the spear in our, in our, in our community. I think we got to keep them, I mean, without our police department, we don't have safety, security. We have, we are alone, so we can't...
I personally don't think anybody disagrees with you on that. That's why we're having the study.
That's in my opinion.
Yeah, so, I mean, nobody disagrees with that. I don't think I can speak for everybody, but, but the money's the money, so we have to do the study.
I know. I, but we had the fifty-nine thousand in there.
But I just want to make sure that, you know, but everybody's want to do it, I think. They just want to do their homework.
Yeah.
I got a question on the budget. From what we got down there at the airport when we met and had our first one, till our total budget now is increased two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and five thousand. Twenty cents, what does that went to? What did we raise it to for that big of a difference?
Are there differences in there?
From when we first got the budget, it was, uh... We've, we've had, it was eleven, three eighty-five, three twenty-six, fifty-six. And when we got here now, it's eleven, six sixty-one, oh thirty-one, seventy-one.
You remember when people brought up those typos? Those line items?
I really don't.
Yeah, there were a lot of typos.
There were like two or three of them.
There was about three of them.
That, that was a...
I'm like saying, there's a...
Something else we added, too. There were, um, there was a typo in the wreck, in the fire, and somewhere else. But there, there was a contractual obligation with the utility fund that was left out.
Uh, the, I remember now. There's been so many things. That tank item for tank maintenance.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't think that that amount was what I wanted to spend. And had I negotiated the contract, I would have made it lower if I could, uh, but then I found out I couldn't. So that made, that made a fifty thousand dollar difference right there.
That answered my question.
I'm sorry I couldn't remember, but thanks for the reminder.
The total expenses on page five with, of the itemized list are different than the total expenses on page one?
Um, because it's including the ten thousand for the police special funds. So if you reduce it by ten, I should...
Okay.
Okay, I see that.
I don't think we should do that. I think regardless, the study's going to show that we need...
Utility fund reserve and the general fund reserve. It's fifteen, six, and twenty-three, six. Is that okay, or they got to be sixteen or twenty-five?
I'm a big fan of rounding.
Oh, yes. Just check.
It taught me that math class.
Checking. Won't be sure.
Well, I just, I got to tell you guys, I, I don't support taking the police, the raises out of the police department. I mean, I can't, I can't vote for that budget.
I agree, honestly.
I mean, we have to put those raises back in there, put the police department, and then I'll vote for the question.
It's for starting officers, too.
Yeah.
Let's consider that as well.
Our starting values on the line with Sheriff's Office right now.
Online with the sheriff.
Is it close, Pete?
Very close.
How many vac, have you got any vacancies right now?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think that's, what does that have to do with anything?
Well, there's...
It has to do that we're not losing employees because of pay. And, you know, I think the people riding in the back of the trash truck are just as important to anybody else. If they didn't pick up our waste and stuff, what would we have?
I, I agree with that.
Could you lay down and go to sleep if the fire department left?
No, I, I just said they're the tip of the spear.
And people out doing our water lines. I mean, they're all important. Every single one of them. That's the reason I requested we do this study, so we could treat them all fairly across the board. It's not I'm against anybody. It's just I want to be forceful, what I think's right.
Okay, now, let's, let's take into consideration this for a minute. The two items that we're talking about, just put them to the side for a minute. Would you vote, would you vote for this budget, other than those two items? Would everybody, would it be a unanimous vote?
So you're speaking of those, the original budget, the, the airport.
Uh-huh.
That, yeah, I would have voted.
Anybody else?
On what now? The one that we first started?
I'm talking about the two items that we just got through discussing, as far as the budget, as far as the salaries are concerned. Would you vote for this budget? Because you're making statements that you will not vote for the budget. It's not really the budget, it's those two line items, all that one line item in which you're considering. That's what I want to get to. I want to make sure that we can at least agree to disagree, if that comes to that point. But let's make, be clear that it's a good budget, other than what's, what we're talking about now. Now, let's look at this also. I just, I just want to reiterate this, just not, but just to put it out there so we understand. If we get the study, then we can implement the raises. Is, is that being responsible or what? Uh, is, is, do you want to wait or not do it? If you're not going to vote for that item, then we don't need to have a study.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of it, but I can't tell you I'm going to vote for everything that they come back with because I...
Right. Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying we come to a, a split right now because we have us saying that we not going to vote for the budget because of one line item. We got to come to an agreement on that line item. That's what I'm talking about, because if we are split council, we can't really progress that way. What we're trying to do is be responsible and fiscally conservative. We're trying to make sure that we are doing this thing right. We get the study, and that through that study, then we will make the raises that are appropriate after we get the study. We're going to spend sixteen thousand and five hundred dollars because we could not agree.
But the study's just not about that, though, right?
Yeah. So that's about most of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just want us to look at this subjectively. I mean, honestly, where are we at right now with the budget? Because we are up for the second reading. And if we're not going to vote for the budget, then we got a problem. Because we got to operate.
There's just some things that...
And see, we, we still got to, um, I'm sorry, let me touch you off.
No, it's all right.
Um, we still...
Really important.
We still got to have public. The public has to come forward, a hearing about the budget. I just want us to strategically talk about this, to what's best for the city of Pickens. Not voting for a budget or voting for a budget with a certain line items that we have to really discuss and get through. And we're not talking about taking that away as far as their raises. What we're talking about is being responsible by getting a study and looking further into the future. But it's going to take some time to do that. Um, if it was up to me, if I was a strong man, I'd give them the raises right now. But it's not up to me. It's up to all of us, and we've got to come together as a council. I'm very, very scared that we're going to go down that slippery slope of being at odds and not getting anything done. That's my fear. And I just want us to get it done, and we're going to do it responsibly. So please, don't kill the budget. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I've, I've heard from some of the directors of, of our city that, um, we're going to spend sixteen thousand dollars, and, and are we really going to, like I've already said, implement what comes back with that study? You know, and I know that's hypothetical, but I think in all reality, no. You know, and I know that's hypothetical, but I think in all reality, no. You know what I mean, if it's not within our budget, we can't afford it anyway, you know what I mean? And that sixteen thousand could have gone ahead and gone to our employees that we know need to raise right now, that haven't had one in a long time, and are way below their pay scale.
How do we know that?
How do we know that?
Yeah.
How do you know that?
How do you know we below the schedule? I don't know it.
Hey, I think that it's been fairly much, the people that I've talked to, I mean, you, you want me to call them names? I mean.
I don't care about you calling names, get them to come in here and explain to us where they're getting their info.
Right, I understand.
Well, is there not a way, if, if we hung up on the spending of the sixteen thousand dollars, do we not have other towns in this state close to the same population that we are, with the same, close to working budget? That we could go and look and see what this one makes, what this one makes, what this one makes?
We have done that, I mean, I, when I first got elected, I asked Chief Beach to go and do a study, and bring back information to, to the council, you know, as to the closest relating city that they could give us wage scale, promotions, payment, all the rest, you know, and present it to the council.
Yeah, I know.
But he's done the work.
Can you do it with every department, while I'm talking?
Right, well, the.
You know, like, is that, they, they probably won on the municipal association page.
Right.
That you can go in there and look, and find a town that's got eleven-million-dollar budget, got fifteen employees. And whatever, and go. Exactly that city, that, we're within two or three, they got maybe four hundred more people than we do. Well, when you look, you know, if it's got broke-down rec director, police chief, fire chief. Well, I did look up their police salaries, and we're right in line with them. And why can we not go from there if we worried about spending that sixteen thousand dollars and just compare?
Yeah, I mean, seems like MASC could have something like that.
Or not, I'm asking.
Would, would MASC, does it, do they have something like that? Well, go ahead.
Okay, um, M A, MASC has salary surveys that they do, that are voluntarily responded to by some people, some years, and others not. Um, Wahaala has a police department, they have administrative department, they do not have garbage, they don't do a lot of public works, because they've contracted it out. Um, the long and the short of it is that this study, and what I would recommend, is these people spend their whole lives doing it, and I trust them more than I trust me, and if I come in here and start spouting off numbers, you're all going to question it, I guarantee it.
Well.
And I would too, so, um, but I don't think that the issue was, I think that everybody was all for the sixteen-five, it was the question of now or later for raises, so I think the sixteen-five is okay. Um, from that standpoint, just as the point of contact for our employees, um, who I think the world of, and we're developing a very strong team here, I would say as an employee of the city, that I accepted the job that I accepted for a certain rate of pay. And I think that all of our employees did the same. They knew what they were gonna make, they cash their check every week, and if we say we need some data, and we intend to take care of them during the course of this year, I believe that the team spirit that we're generating can take that. From a morale standpoint, I think that employees just need to see that there is a plan in place, and that we're moving forward. It's just my two cents.
And that's what we said, that to start it all with the budget, that we was gonna do a study and see who was short, and who's good, do we not?
And just to dispel the, every employee, we've got very few people who aren't gonna make satisfactory, are going to get a raise, so it's, it's not, I just don't want it to be said, they haven't gotten a raise in a long time, and they're not gonna get one, they.
How much, how much money is that by giving that four percent across the board?
It's two-hundred-thousand dollars when you include fringe benefits, about a hundred and forty of that is direct salary, correct? Those are, those are my recollections, but, and I'm pretty good at remembering some things.
So it's not the fact that we're not doing anything?
Yes, we are, we are improving the situation of our employees by roughly a little bit more than two-hundred-thousand dollars. Uh, we're investing in our workforce.
When inflation's at fifteen percent minimum?
No, it's at three and a half, that's, that's where we went before.
That's a lie, I mean, we go to the grocery store.
Well, I can tell you what's not a lie.
We go to the grocery store, and it's twenty-five percent.
I didn't get the two-point-seven percent increase in my social security, and it's supposed to be based on inflation.
I mean, we, we can't, no one can afford to buy housing, cause it's eight percent, I mean, these, these people, I, I went around and talked to them all, they, they can't survive, and they can't buy groceries, they can't. I mean, the rent's going up, everybody, everything's going up, cause everybody's charging more, I mean, our phone's just went up fifteen, twenty dollars, you know what I mean? Just, they just, Verizon just sent it, oh, you're, by notice, you're gonna get five, five dollars a line, plus X percent. I mean, everybody's going up, and, but our people can't afford to pay it.
In, in fairness, our study will evaluate.
I know the study, but are we gonna do it?
Not what their needs are, I mean, that's a separate question.
I understand, are we gonna do it, number one, and number two, I think they're our most important asset, we gotta take care of our people, I don't care what.
So you don't think we're taking care of them now?
No, I don't.
You don't?
No. No.
I'm very also scared that we can pay whatever we want to to our employees, and the city runs out of business.
Well, those same people we've been just talking about is gonna get the tax raised.
We can start paying them, but if we don't have the income coming in, we will go out of business. I, my, my, my heart, I wanna give everybody fifteen percent like you're talking about, but we will go out of business.
And I didn't ask for that, I just said that's where I.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, whatever we're at, and whatever we're talking about, we can't just frisically say, okay, let's give a raise. We've got to have data, we gotta have some kind of discussion, what we're doing now, and then make a sound decision. That's where I'm at, because, y'all, we ain't rich, this town, we just had to take Bard money and pay the budget.
Two-point-one million dollars.
It ain't a lot of money. We, we now getting in the process of getting our money, and not only that, but we're not even getting the fees and the rates and the stuff that we should be getting with, um, business license, with hospitality tax, the money's not coming in like it should be, because we have not been doing the business as a city like we should. Our budget should be a little bit more than eleven million dollars. All I'm saying is, y'all, we just, we knew. Don't make decisions that we just gonna bite us a year from now. I just wanna make sure that not only do we pay Chief Beach and his officers, but we can do it consistently. We might can do it for three months, and then we out of business.
I'd say go with the four percent, the ones who meet it.
Mm-hmm.
After the evaluation, get the study done, implement it when it gets back.
But it won't be in the budget by the time it gets back to us. We're gonna have to revisit our budget.
And that's no problem.
Standard practice is at least quarterly, you reevaluate your budget, and very often.
That we have never done.
And that, that's what cities all over do, the first one is, and I think I've gone through this before, but the first one is you come to the end of the year, and you figure out, are there budget lines that weren't spent, where there's residual revenue that needs to be accounted for going forward? This, this city's never done that, that's a routine practice, to get you, after you close out one year into the next year, it's never been done here. So that will be a budget amendment, um, because I know that the term budget amendment, because last year's was pretty significant, kinda frightens everybody, but, but then you do go into the new calendar year, and you look and you true up, you know, are we way ahead of projections, or are we behind, and, and you balance things out mid-year typically.
I feel like the, I really liked the idea about the, the water one item. Um, this budget that we talked about when we met at the airport, you know, our administrator and our finance director met with all of our department heads, and those department heads pushed for what they felt was most important for their department, what they needed, right, and that's what they should do, they should advocate for what they really need. And this was presented to us as what we can afford, and what is feasible for us.
We're paying off debt, I mean, we, we're telling the people, not only we're not gonna give them the fifty-nine, but we're not letting them do, you know, and they all came to us and said, we need capital, and we need fire trucks, garbage trucks, police cars, we need all this, but we're gonna tell them, you don't get any new capital, and we're not gonna give you, and we're gonna, we're gonna do a study for sixteen grand, and, and oh, by the way, we don't know that we're gonna do, implement any of it, but we'll at least have the numbers for you. And I, I, I'm just sitting, what are we doing, you know? And I do understand what Isaiah's saying, and Mayor's saying, I, you know, it, I mean, we can't spend what we don't have, but.
But it was proposed to us before our last budget work session, that number, you know? And that was doable. And that was after all the department heads came, and could have asked for money for whatever they wanted to, and narrowed it down many times, from what I understand.
Right. So, what do, I mean, sum up what you're trying to say, so I, so I can understand.
I just, I feel like this, this is a very good budget that was presented to us, and it was very thoughtfully gone over, and people were met with, things were considered, moved around, taken out, we've done so much with money since we started our elected positions. And I am for keeping this as it was presented, um, and as we discussed. But I, and I think we still, should still do the, the study, absolutely.
Yeah. I agree with you, I think that's what we should do, keep it the way it was.
How I feel right.
So what was, what is the way it was, cause I'm getting, the way it was when we left it, that the airport was one thing.
Yeah.
Then it got changed.
And the way it got presented at our last meeting was two in total different things.
Right.
The differences at this point is, and from the airport, there's roughly two-hundred-thousand dollars, which is fifty-thousand dollars off a contract that I thought I could renegotiate, but I couldn't. Um, the other were corrections to some mistyped numbers, so that totaled up about two-hundred-thousand dollars. The difference between the salary items is fifty-nine thousand dollars.
That's what we said a long time ago today.
So in, in eleven-and-a-half-million-dollar budget, we're stalled over fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Thick of nine-thousand dollars here and there heads up by the end of the year.
Yeah, that's the budget we agreed to.
I personally think it's a solid, very good, and I have faith in doing what Danny said a minute ago, I have faith everything will come out, and I think in two or three months, well, all this will work out good, we just can't do things overnight, you, and my experience is, when you start pushing things too hard, you're making mistakes, sometimes it's best to just.
Okay, the only thing that we're hung up about is the salaries, right? Everybody, everybody's in agreement with the water rates that we talked about and discussed that was brought by Councilman Neely?
Yeah.
Everybody's good with that.
I think that was a wonderful idea.
Yeah, it's good.
So that can be implemented, right?
Yeah.
Only thing we hang up now is whether we're gonna go forward with one item.
Uh, uh, let me give you this. If you okay the, whatever it was
Mm-hmm.
on the money, and you do the study, and you just bumped ten, uh, ten thousand dollars, and the study comes back and says he needs ten more thousand dollars, you gonna hand that to him too?
No, we have to renegotiate and talk and discuss when the study comes back.
I'm using any, I'm just going to ten a month, or any.
Just so everybody knows, that's a hypothetical.
We would have to come back and reconsider once those numbers, that's what Mr. Neely was saying earlier, that he's not just gonna vote for whatever they're coming back.
So does this have to be?
The study is gonna be a guide for us to make a decision.
Well, I don't know how you could do that, Mayor, how you can say, it's like you're in say that I'm gonna go along with what they come back.
Yeah.
I didn't say that, I said it's gonna be a guide.
Maybe I was, should have been addressing Mr. Neely.
No, I, I'm agreeing with you, that we're not just gonna say that, to answer
Right.
Mr. Adams' question, we're not just gonna say, whatever they come back at, we need to throw ten more thousand dollars at ten salary, that's not gonna happen, we're gonna renegot, we're gonna re-talk about it.
Sorry, Tim.
Well, I just think in the, the notion of doing what's right, we need to get a study done, and let every department participate in it, and then do what's right by our employees to the very best we can, instead of just singling out one department. I mean, I'd feel the same way if you was talking about the fire department, the maintenance department, or whatever, I just don't, that's how this city has operated too many years, willy-nilly, just come out, give him a raise, he needs one, da-da-da-da-da.
That's my willy-nilly.
But I, I agree, I agree, Robert, that it needs to be done across the board, it's just, this was presented to us after talking with all of the department heads, and getting what their most important desires were.
Had been told that there was not gonna be any additional raises this year. And they kinda lived by what was asked. Just like, like, like they was, uh, some people were told, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be capital expended to, I mean, that's what everybody, so, you know, I'm not, if we gonna give one department a raise, we need to give every department a raise.
That is not true, that is not so.
I don't agree with that.
Well, this doesn't have to be voted into that.
They should be studied and seen by.
I agree, we should study them, absolutely, we should study them.
I agree, we're not discrediting that.
Yeah, we want, we want to study, but our, I, I think the police are the tip of the spear for this study, for this city.
We can't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we need to make a decision, because our council, councilman brought forth two items for change in the budget. Right now, we can't vote on the budget, but I want us to vote on what kind of direction we want to give our administrator to move forward. Whether we're going to move forward with a changed budget with those two items, or one item, or whatever it may be. First, I wanna see sure hands that wanna keep the budget just like it is.
Which, which is?
Which is what?
Yeah, I mean, without any of those two changes that, that's nearly brought forward.
Okay, and then you're gonna ask him?
Without either, either one of them, just keep it just as it is.
You mean the way we talked about it and did the few changes that?
No change before, no changes. Right now, who would go with the budget how it is right now? Okay, who would go with the budget with one change, just to change for the water rates? Y'all see what y'all voted for, right? Just changing water rates and not changing the salaries, that's your vote real.
No. No, no, that's what he just.
No, what I'm saying is, you changed the water rates, but we didn't change anything for the salaries.
Well, I thought the salaries were in there as a given.
Yeah, I'm saying we didn't change that.
Okay.
You got a budget, you got two items, we said, first I said, keep two items in it, right? Then I said, okay, we gonna take one item out of that, which means that we gonna take the salaries, and we gonna vote for the rates, the water rates. Or, I was gonna ask again, well, we gonna just go vote for the salaries and not the water rates? It ain't that.
I, I think I understood.
I was like, you being shady.
I'm being shady, don't say that.
I, I, in another way, I think everybody's.
Yeah, everybody supported a water rate.
We want the water rate.
Okay, now, how many of you would vote for the salaries to stay without any changes?
What, what does that mean?
Fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Fifty-nine, in the budget.
Yeah.
I want it in the budget.
Okay.
I believe I have my direction.
The direction is change just the water rates, and we're going to have to. I'm sorry it didn't work out, but it's gonna work out, y'all. I wish we could be, I think we, I think we, I wanted us to be unanimous with this, but I think it's very responsible moving forward the way we are, and I'm, I want us to, but I will be very pit bull about taking care of. about taking care of our employees. I'm, I'm going through this to get the budget passed, but after this, I'm going after taking care of our employees, especially our police.
If we're gonna do this, then we, let's get the study started right now. Right, and we don't wait till July. We start right now. I mean, I want these people not to be put on hold. Let's just say we're moving ahead and give our, give him direction to go right now.
That's what you would like. Okay, let's see who, now, we can't vote today. This is not a voting session.
This will be three weeks.
But we wanna, we wanna, wait, wait a minute. We gonna give direction to our administrator on talking to Evergreen Solutions.
Right.
Is everybody in agreement that he does that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Everybody like that?
Yeah.
You got your direction?
Did you have a question?
Yeah. Okay, now we good to go. Does anybody have any other questions on budget?
Mr. Mayor, from a parliamentary, uh, procedure perspective, just so people know what will come next.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we do have a public hearing.
Yes.
At the next occasion, and even though we discussed an amendment, since we now have direction and we've done the studying, we will bring a second reading version of the budget that follows this direction. There will be no need at that meeting unless there are additional amendments, if that makes sense.
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
So we move forward. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Because we talked about everything else in the budget is fine, other than what we, those two items and we got one going and we gonna hold off on the other to where we get, um, the study started tomorrow. See what the fashions can do with it. Everybody okay with that? You don't have to shake your hand. I mean, just shake your hand. All right.
Got a lock here at home.
All right, that's it. That's it. Ordinances regarding, uh, regarding registration of rental, residential, and commercial structures. Administrator, would you lead us in that, please?
Oh, this is something that, uh, we've been discussing. Uh, Councilwoman Winter has been very interested in this as well. It's been kind of the, uh, lead on looking into it. Uh, basically, this is looking at some of the best practices, uh, other communities have taken. And I think you've looked a lot at Wahala and what they've done. It basically gives, uh, some new tools, uh, for enforcement of buildings, um, of all types, uh, or the intent. Uh, mostly that are, uh, a lot of them are, uh, not vacant. I don't wanna call them abandoned. We use that term sometime. But, uh, that are vacant. Also occupied rental structures, both commercial and residential, is something that we're looking to target through a registration program and then through actual inspections and making some, uh, demands on property owners to meet, uh, basic health and safety, uh, and code standards. And, uh, I believe that, uh, Councilwoman Winter probably has some more thoughts on this.
Yeah, I just really urge, after talking with all of you and hearing the public's concerns about a lot of the vacant buildings around all of our town, uh, businesses and homes, residential and commercial, I think that this really deserves our consideration. And you'll see in here, in the vacant and abandoned proposed ordinance for your consideration, the purpose is pretty clearly stated and I think it very much makes sense and it's true to what we would like to do and see done. And there's different sections. I really liked the different categories of issues with the buildings and how that's separated out. Registering the rental properties and the vacant buildings, what's being advertised for a new commercial to come in, new residential to come in, either way, it's important for us to have a record of that registration in the city. That'll follow in line and help us with accommodations tax, hopefully, sp, um, hospitality maybe. You know, there's a lot of other things that will fall into place if we can get something like this on the table. I think that these are really good first rough drafts. Obviously, the city attorney is going to review everything and look through everything. Um, totally open to changes or recommendations, obviously, on any part of it. But I think this really deserves our attention for the city as a whole, the residents, the property owners, the business owners, everybody.
I think it'd be fun. It's a good, good start.
Mm-hmm.
Residential. Yeah. What, what are the, how do we enforce that and what, what is a violation? I didn't, I didn't get to sort of this.
So basically, the way that it's written now is a hundred and twenty days to register the property as vacant. And there's a registration fee. It's fifty dollars as it's written right now. And, and then it, it depends on the category that the building would fall into. So category three would be basically derelict condition. And there would, they would have to, the property owner would have to come with plans for a revision plan for that building or start being imposed fines, annual fines.
Significant fines, which they should be. I mean, this will motivate them to get some things done.
And there's also ex, uh, several different exceptions, especially for rental, Mr. Neely. Or for, sorry, for residential, there are several exceptions. You know, if your property, as long as you're not breaking any of the other city codes, like, and there's a lot of them, as Mr. Administrator just said earlier in his announcements, um, there are exceptions for people, certainly.
But I, I talked to Councilman Neely and I echo his sentiments. We have to do this across the board. We can't be favoritism and say, okay, we won't take care of this property and that property. We gotta do it across the board and be fair, that's fair, to all of our citizens.
Yeah.
You don't let anybody get away with not taking care of the property adequately. What do y'all think about that?
It's good.
Because we've been, that's been a problem in our history that we won't enforce it.
How are we gonna enforce this? Just hypothetically.
The people, the people, the people we won't give a raise to.
Little Johnny's house down here is about, it's in bad shape, but he can't afford to keep it up to what we think should be. How are we gonna go to him? If he's taking every dime he can to live, how are we gonna enforce it on him?
In, in a lot of cases, and, and we will dig into this and study it and find different elements. Um, and it's not fun, but in some of these ordinances, what ends up happening and is that, um, the city will go in if it's a dire need and will fix it. And then there will be a bill for how much that cost. The community has paid, um, to make sure that that is not, you know, a fire hazard or drug house or any number of things. Um, and then there's a lien placed against the property. And if it's ever sold, then the city gets repaid. And in some cases, if it's a substantial bill, that can be pushed forward to say you have to turn the property over. So there would be a loss of a piece of property, but there wouldn't be any money coming out of somebody's pocket. Very often, I think what ends up happening is that this impacts, um, absentee property owners and landlords. The people who are living there are, as much as anything, victims of where they're living.
I just made a, a quick, little, just tour around several streets today. And I picked up about fifteen places that are like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's a lot.
And a lot of the time it's landowners that have deferred maintenance to a certain point and then let it caught up with them and now they don't, there's no care to get it restored. And I feel that we have a duty to keep the city in its best condition as we can. Because it affects your neighbor's property. And for, for res, or for commercial, that's a whole different, you know, consideration. There's a lot of issues, tenants wanting to rent a space on Main Street or in the city limits and they can't even get it to a place where they could make it a profitable rental 'cause the landlord hasn't maintained the building.
Tim's got two or three out there right around him.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um.
But I, you know, I'm all for it.
It's okay, but on the agenda.
Yeah.
As long as the attorney has reviewed it.
That's just been reviewed by our attorney, then we just put down, put that as another thing to put on budget?
For first reading.
I mean, not budget, but the agenda for first reading.
If he can do it for next time, I know he's busy, but.
And please.
Well, he's got three weeks.
Read through it and say changes that you'd like to see, too. I mean, I want everybody to really consider these two ordinances.
This will be one that I will both encourage and warn council. Um, bring your, your passion for this and then be ready to back it up because, um, this will be something that the people who are impacted will have strong feelings about. But I think that the community also has stronger feelings about, we all wanna lift each other up. And that's really the eventual intent of this.
Okay, with agreement, we have that on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance to amend, chapter fourteen, solid waste. Section fourteen-four, section fourteen-ten.
Um, essentially, this is, and, you know, as we've talked about, we've got some outdated ordinances and as we were working on the budget, um, I noticed that our, uh, section fourteen on solid waste, uh, the, the first, uh, change to this would be that, you know, in our current code, it speaks about putting bags on the street instead of the roll carts that we currently have. Uh, so that's just some housekeeping, uh, to update it to what our actual practice is at this point. Um, it's good housekeeping to, um, to make sure that our code actually reflects what we're doing here in the city. Um, and then, uh, this would also add section fourteen dash ten, solid waste service and payment for fees mandatory for each water customer. Um, a concern is that, you know, commercial solid waste, uh, charges are double what the city is charging. Um, but as we get into the idea of charging more to cover our costs, but certainly not as much as commercial, um, we did have some people opt out of commercial solid waste collection when there was a recent increase in fees. And as an administrator, that's a nightmare scenario. If everybody said, well, I don't wanna pay the new fee, so I'm not going to do it. Um, not just for the money, it's because of the trash that would be in the streets and the vermin and, um, garbage collection is done for a health and safety purpose and we need to make sure that's maintained. Uh, this is a standard that's in place in, in many cities where if you're a water customer, then you're paying for garbage. Um, and you need to, uh, take out your roll cart and take it back. They're just rules that we all live by. So that's the, the purpose of this amendment.
So would there be, if somebody wasn't using, like, I just know there are several people, since we stopped doing the recycling collection, that they're now driving their trash and their recycling to the recycling centers themselves? Would there be any kind of exclusion for people that don't have a roll cart and aren't using the service at all? No?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So. Every water customer, including people outside the city?
No.
This is in the, in the city, oh?
This is in the city. Um, I think we offer a limited.
Limited, yeah.
Sanitation outside the city, very limited.
Alright.
From what you're seeing in the rail, you're in agreement, we put this on the agenda?
Yeah.
Alright, that sounds good. Dylan. Now, we have comments from council members. We welcome your comments.
Since we, since we on trash and commercial and all that, we need to hit on, uh, grease traps at restaurants in this town.
Yes, sir.
We're examining that, enforcing that. I feel like.
I went and inspected the lift station and y'all, it was grease. This thick. You looked like you could stand on it.
I ain't had dinner yet.
I'm sorry, but I think that's one thing that we need to look at also.
And I've heard several that complained during the Isaiah festival about one establishment. Just the garbage and everything at the back of their establishment, so. I'll tell you that later. I don't, I ain't gonna put them on full blast unless they come at me, then I will. I have no problem. But we need to, we need to really examine that.
Yes, sir.
I feel that. If we trying to better this city and clean it up, that's one thing that's been addressed right there, too.
What is in there already? Do you know about grease traps? Is there anything about restaurants?
They supposed to be.
There's building code requirements for grease traps, uh, and I, I don't know the stats, 'cause we, we don't do collection. I'd have to look into it some more.
Probably enforcing it.
Can we give, we give our administrator the opportunity to really study on it and bring, bring us a report back on what we can do? Could we have that next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I'll put you to work.
Absolutely.
Well, I just got two ten thousand dollar raises.
I beg your pardon. That's it. Does anybody else have anything concerned, any council members? Anything's on your heart. We welcome it. I just wanna solicit y'all prayers. My, my blood pressure is up.
I'm just sorry about that.
No, it's my fault. I wouldn't cut.
That's before you walked in here, right?
I wouldn't cut grass, y'all, and, and I was out there in that heat. When I saw May come in here, I said, I'm alright now. She didn't take care of me. Alright. But, um, I thank you all for being here. I really do. All of our citizens and our council, this is a beautiful opportunity. Even when we didn't just agree, when we didn't agree, we were able to do it civilly and really productively. 'Cause I don't want anybody to just think like me. I don't want you to be a clone. I want you to have your own mind and bring good, fresh ideas. We welcome you. If that be said, I need a motion.
Make the motion if you enjoy.
He always does that.
He's an expert.
It's been seconded, buddy. Go it. If it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. Have a great night, y'all. Love y'all.